And, okay, got it.
Jan.
Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
I'm doing well. How about you?
Good, thanks.
Ryan, hey, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey, Annie.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go.
Good evening, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Stephanie.
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 I hope we're successful tonight. We tried to do audio beforehand. Yes.
I don't hear an echo, so that's great.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we tried to test it out just to make sure we don't have the same problems as last time.
I appreciate that. I don't want to hear my voice twice.
Randy. Can you put that fire up again? That's fine.
Hey, John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen.
Hey, Greg. And Sean's making this evening's meeting. He just was, he did the field trip earlier in the week, correct?
It was to my understanding, he didn't make it to the site. Is that right, Janie?
Hi, Stephanie. What is your question?
My question was, did Commissioner Cardenas make it to the site this weekend?
No, we didn't, we didn't, uh, um, we didn't have anybody come over the weekend from the, uh, the city commissioners. Yeah, yeah. And, uh, I think from John's call, um, last Friday, and we, and I think John gave both of our phone number, and we didn't receive any calls.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Here's Sean. He's coming on.
Everyone.
Hey, Sean. Okay, well, I think, uh, we're all here, so why don't we get started? Uh, I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, you want to do a roll call?
I'm sorry. One second. Uh, it's okay. Meeting to order. Um, one second. Oh, you started it, right?
I already started that.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Cardenas?
Present.
Commissioner Cooley?
Present.
Commissioner Douglas?
Chair.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Chair Shelf?
Yes, thank you. Okay, John, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. Do I hand over the heart? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. I love that. Okay, approve order of the agenda. As chair, I'm going to approve that. So, uh, next item is blue folder items. John, do you have anything, or Stephanie, have anything you want to talk about?
None.
Okay. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Uh, item seven, consent calendar. We've got seven A, which is approve affidavit of posting for the planning commissioner regular meeting of April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Seven B is continuation of remote planning commission meetings during the month of April, two thousand twenty-three, pursuant to the requirement of AB three sixty-one. And seven C, approve the minutes for the March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three planning commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve seven A, seven B, and seven C simultaneously.
Second. Great. Want to do roll call?
Commissioner Cardenas?
Approve.
Mr. Cooley?
Approve.
Commissioner Douglas?
Approve.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Chair Shelf?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, exclude the consent calendar items. I see none. Public hearings on items continued from previous meeting. I see none. So it moves us to item ten on the agenda, new public hearings. This is ten A zoning case number twenty-three zero zero four. This is for seventeen Crest Road East. Uh, would you give us an overview?
Okay, we're gonna have Stephanie give the presentation.
Okay.
And just for the record, this is the one that we visited this morning at the site. And so, Stephanie, you ready?
Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
All right, my notes up there?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you enlarge it?
Yeah.
Presentation. Bottom right.
No, it's on my note screen. Sorry, bear with me.
No worries.
Oh, I know one. I know one's wrong. One second. Let me stop sharing there. It's gonna share the wrong screen actually, that's why. So I'm gonna share your, uh, screen one.
No, that's not how it's supposed to be.
Version, so. It's because of this.
Okay, now how's it looking?
Should be okay. Oh, same thing. I'm sorry. Just try that again. Um, this one? This one? This one right here, right?
That's the one.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Okay. My apologies.
No worries. Looks great.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, let's go back. Okay, never mind. All right, sorry about the technical difficulties. Um, good evening, Honorable Chair Shelf and Commissioners. I'm here to present zoning case number twenty-three dash zero zero four for the subject property located at seventeen Crest Road East. The applicant, Mr. Wang, is requesting a site plan review to convert a total of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six square feet into livable space. And the zoning for the subject property is RAS two. And the property is located at the southeast portion of the city, of the south, the south section of the city. As you can see, this is the subject property right here. It's accessible off of Crest Road East, and it's accessible from a driveway that extends off of Crest Road East all the way down into, onto the site. And a portion, a north, a portion of the west kind of touches on to Portuguese Bend Road. Okay, so the net lot size is three thousand nine hundred, three hundred thousand, nine ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and forty, um, square feet. So it's nine point eight acres, and as you can see, that's a pretty large sized lot. The lot is more, is large enough to support the proposed uses. Um, the, like I said, the project proposes to enclose two covered porch areas. This section right here, can you guys see where the little mouse is hovering over? And then this section here, that's another covered porch area. And then this, um, the project also proposes to convert this, this garage, this attached garage, into habitable space. This is the first addition. This is an existing patio that is located at the northeast section of the residence. It's, um, two hundred and forty-four square feet. The applicant is proposing to enclose this area, the front area here and the side, just to enclose this area and convert it into habitable space. It will be converted into a T-room. Also, for the second addition, it's actually just a conversion, but this is a seven hundred and two square foot garage. It will be converted into a kitchen. Chinese, uh, be converted into a walk kitchen. Um, the garage doors will be removed, and they will be replaced with windows, and I believe one door that will be, um, put right here at the end of the, right here. This is the main addition. The third addition is the main addition. This main addition is located at the back end of the property. Um, the, it's an existing one thousand four hundred and ninety-two covered patio. So the project proposes to demolish this existing one thousand four hundred and ninety-two covered patio, the covered porch area, that will be demolished, and then, um, this air, this footprint here, the new roof will extend all the way to this, the footprint here. There's the footprint right in this section right here. Will extend all the way out to this footprint. So what they're just doing is basically enclosing this entire area of the footprint, and it's gonna be adding one thousand nine hundred and ten square feet of livable space. And the project also proposes this, it's kind of hard to see, but this yellow line right here, um, is going to be, this lawn area will be converted into a paved deck. And the deck will, it's eighty-one by five feet. It's eighty-one feet long in length, and then five feet wide. All of the additions are within the existing footprint. Um, the summary of approvals needed, a site plan review is required for any additions that exceeds nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet. Uh, the total, like I said, of the residential additions are two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six square feet, and the project also includes an outdoor paved deck area of one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. The lot coverage disturbance in building pad, uh, structural coverage, uh, the, the maximum is twenty percent, and this project is well below the structural coverage. It's twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-three square feet, or five point seven percent. The flat work coverage is fifteen percent maximum, and as you can see, it's at thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two square feet, or eight point one percent, which is below the maximum. The, um, combined lot coverage, structural and flat work coverage, the maximum permitted is thirty-five percent, and it's at fifty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-five square feet, or thirteen point seven, which is well below the thirty-five percent maximum. There is no additional disturbance. Um, the only thing is the building pad coverage exceeds by two point six percent, but that's just a maximum guideline. So for pad one, um, it's twenty, twenty thousand, three hundred and ninety-two square feet, or thirty-two point six percent for the building pad coverage, and that's just for pad one. That's where the proposed additions are being proposed. So the project does comply with all of the Rolling Hills, um, development standards. And so these are some renderings of the proposed additions. This, the top one, which is the enclosed patio area at the rear of the house. This, where my, where the mouse is hovering, as you can see, this is the open patio. And then the next rendering to the side is where the enclosed area, this is with the roof line extended, and the addition, and the enclosure. Um, the next one below, this is, this area right here is the open patio that's located at the northeast portion of the residence. And then, um, the rendering, to the, the next rendering is the enclosed area. This is the two hundred and forty-four square foot, uh, addition area. This one's kind of hard to tell, but this is the overall, uh, well, first, here's the proposed garage area. This is the double car garage that's gonna be enclosed, and you can barely see, but where my mouse is hovering, that's, uh, the proposed enclosure of the conversion of the garage. Uh, the existing residence is pretty much in a, like a U-shaped, and with this enclosure of the rear patio, the one thousand, the one thousand nine hundred and ten square feet, it'll give it a donut shaped. This is the overall site plan, and as you can see, it doesn't encroach into any of the setbacks or any of the easements. It doesn't, um, it meets all of the, project meets all of the development standards of the municipal code. Community communication, the, the project was published in the Daily Breeze on four eight, and all public hearings, hearing notices were sent out to all residents within a thousand foot radius, also on April eighth. Okay, some concerns. Um, we did, one of the residents attended, Charlie Rain, attended the field trip meeting this morning. He's at, he lives at Four Pinto Road, and he also came into the city today to review the plans and look at the files. He, um, expressed his concerns regarding the drainage issues. And, um, earlier this evening, it's probably about six twenty, I received a letter from Mr. Rain, so I don't know if you want me to read it, read it into the record, um, but we did receive one letter.
So, so since it came in so late, why don't you read it to us so we know what his objection is?
Okay. All right, so it says, "Two members of the planning commission and city council. The property, the property lies above the flying triangle landslide. Every drop of runoff from it causes damage in one way or another. It either scores the canyons, deepens them with additional runoff and causing further sloughing on the sides, or in the case of Little Klondike Canyon, doesn't flow through all of, through it all, and seeps directly into the side plane, slide plane. The watershed that includes seventeen Crest is already causing damage to virtually every home in the slide area. Adding more runoff, however, small, the increase, the percentage, further increases the liability to the city, to the residents below. The residence at seventeen Crest Road already has over fifty-four thousand square feet of impermeable improvements on this property alone. And for every inch of rain it falls on, already wet impermeable surface, forty-five hundred cubic feet of runoff is generated, a whopping thirty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty gallons at seven point four eight gallons per cubic foot. Prior to the development, the ma, the majority of this water would naturally percolate in place. Since that is no longer possible, there's a pos, responsibility for approving powers to do so without further damaging properties below. If the city feels compelled to approve projects such as this, it should only be done if the water that is generated is safely channeled through and out of the slide area through drainage pipes. Prior to making any decisions on this application, the city needs to research the hydrolog, uh, hydrological and engineering report referenced in the two thousand and eleven resolution number one sixteen, one hundred, one thousand one hundred and sixteen regarding construction of the replacement residence. If that report doesn't address runoff from the property that specifically fully protects all properties below, then a plan should be developed to where, to do so. In addition, my recollection was that the driveway surface, as originally designed, were pavers with the intent that they were to be permeable. They are not, and it appears the driveways have been sealed. It would be egregious to acquainties, the desires of one resident to the detriment and potential danger to the property of the entire neighborhood below. Fortunately, there are solutions to allow development to occur where further risk can be eliminated. These options should be explored and implemented prior to any approval, further requests from homeowners whose properties feel the southern canyons, Paintbrush, Klondike, and Little Klondike. Photos attached show Little Klondike flowing at the Mackenbach property drain on the March twenty-first. Low flow as it was raining, as it was not raining all the time. And a photo from the bottom of our driveway, a few hundred yards just below, um, afterwards, showing no water. Another photo from today, sh, showing the creek did not flow at all in this. One of the wettest on records. The additional two photos show the area directly below the middle area of the house at the seventeen Crest. It is perched above the side slow, side, the, the slide. The last photo is the probable area where all of the water infiltrates the canyon and disappears into the side plane. Regards Charlie and Pia Rain, Two Pinto, Four Pinto, and Sixty-four Portuguese Bend Road. For the record, uh, the, the pictures were not included in the email. They will be delivered at a later time. He was having some internet issues. So that concludes his letter. Thank you. Um, some of the concerns that were brought up this morning were the garage parking requirements, and one of the commissioners had asked a question about the parking requirements. So this is from our code seventeen sixteen one sixty. B, parking requirements, every single family dwelling, including manufactured homes, used as primary residence, shall have an above ground with a maximum, minimum capacity of two cars with direct paved access to the maintained roadway. Um, a minimum of three car garages shall be required if the property is developed with a guest house or any servants quarters. And I went through, uh, previous plans and, um, with the association and what we had on file, and we, and there are no servants quarters. So the part, they, the project does comply with the parking requirements. Drainage, that's something that, um, we were gonna discuss. The, I guess, according to the applicant, the civil engineer was not able to attend the meeting tonight. And landscape, uh, the, that was also brought up at the field trip meeting this morning. Landscape issues were questions of regarding the heights, uh, that were along the parameter of the, along the front of the property. That was primarily for screening. The project is categorically exempt, um, from section fifteen three oh three, which exempts the construction of, which exempts construction location of limited number of new small facilities or structures, including accessory structures, but not limited to garages, carports, patios, swimming pools, and fences. So the project is categorically exempt. So our recommendation is to open the, open to public, open the project to public hearing, receive public testimony, um, discuss the project, and then adopt resolution number two thousand twenty-three, approving the project as presented. Um, are there any questions? That concludes my presentation for the evening. I'll turn it over to you, Brad.
Thank you very much. Your presentations are always very thorough, and we appreciate it. Um, do any of the planning commissioners have any questions before I open it up to the public?
I'll ask, um, basically, we're under our purview tonight. We approve the plan, if we approve the plans. Once that's done, the city, obviously, uh, the process that goes through after this, uh, through the association and the county will address all drainage, right? So that's nothing we do tonight, but we just allow that to happen through the normal process, correct?
Is that right, John?
That's right.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so Stephanie, I've got a question. On the hedge out front, we've, we've, um, basically, we've let them know that we don't want to hedge, so they spread it out, and they created some open space between. Um, have we talked about a five or six foot height so that it gives them the, um, you know, the, the, the protection that they need, but it still doesn't take away the view above the house going out towards the ocean?
Yeah, I can tell you that we did approve the plans. Um, we had consultation from our landscape consultant, who took a look at the plans, reviewed them, and so they're to be spaced out eight feet on center, and they have, um, gaps in between that are twelve feet. And the owner's concern about that is that, uh, right now, it, they're really spread out, you know, pretty far apart, and people can see right through them. Well, we notified the applicant that eventually, over time, when they mature, they'll, they'll grow up and they'll start to fill in, and, um, you know, it will, it will provide more privacy. But right now, since they are newly planted, you know, they're, they are, there are some gaps in there. Um, they feel that they, they wanted to, um, you know, fill in the gaps, so they wanted to kind of put some, um, I guess, space them closer, um, and review, remove those twelve foot gaps. Um, and when we ran that, that by our consultant, she had concerns that, and that would definitely create a, a hedge. Um, the type of plants being used at the very front are sweet bay loris, and those can have a tendency to grow twenty-five feet wide and forty feet high, if not maintained. And so you do bring up a good point in terms of the height, because of, um, you know, if they're, they're not maintained, they could get pretty tall. Um, you know, we were more concerned about the, the hedge look, you know, so the growth, um, sideways on there. Her recommendation was really to, to leave it as is, as the plans are approved. Um, you know, ideally, she had mentioned that they should be spaced out ten to twelve feet apart. Um, but with, uh, the, the way they plant them, you know, now, um, you know, they, they may cluster, but they'll be, um, you know, if they're maintained, you know, um, they're, you know, they're spaced out well right now. Um, in regards to the height, I mean, you have a point about that, because they, 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 you know, if not maintained, they could go really high. So that's something that the planning commission could include a condition on, if you'd like to, um, you know, make sure that the heights are maintained. I'll, I'll say that Crest Road is higher than where the, the fence and where the plants, those shrubs are planted, and so five feet may be a little bit low, because you'll look right over that. So I would suggest maybe something, you know, taller than that, but, um, as long as they maintain on a regular basis, and, you know, not let it go too.
Even if you give you eight feet, you're, you're much better off. I mean, if they go forty feet in the air, you're gonna have a cave up there. So if, if we don't put some restrictions on maintaining that and, and keeping that at a reasonable height, you're gonna lose that beautiful view out at the Pacific Ocean, and you're gonna come to that stretch, and it's gonna be like you're in a cave. Because you can plant those things five feet apart, or six feet apart, or eight feet apart, whatever you did, they're eventually gonna grow out and connect, but I, I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about seeing over the top of it and having daylight on Crest Road and, and, you know. So we can address that, but, but that's a big concern of mine.
that, but, but that's a big concern of mine. So, okay, well, I, if no one else has any other comments, I'm going to open it up to the public. So if you'd like to speak, please state your name, your address, and we'd love to hear what you have to say. Okay, so no one?
I'm, I've been, this is Leah. I'm sorry, I've been trying to type into the chat.
Yeah, Leah, so, do you want to make a comment?
Um, just a clarification, if possible, Stephanie and John, the question from Commissioner Kirkpatrick about the city checking on the drainage, that was going to be at the city and the county issue. My understanding is that unless the city council elects to take any project that comes from the commission under our jurisdiction, it doesn't automatically, that the, that the city wouldn't be reopening this or relooking at the drainage issue. It could, if it elected to take it under its jurisdiction. And it's also my understanding that it's the county that looks at the drainage requirements and plans, and are, are experts that we go to both the planning commission and, and the city council, if they were to take it into, on their jurisdiction, to advise us as we would consider the comments from Mr. Rain. So I'm not, I'm not real comfortable with the answer that was given, that yes, the count, the commission approves, just approves this, and then somehow the city's going to do something else about it.
Yeah, I, I think that's good clarification, yes. We, we don't have the resources, we don't have the staff. That's why the, the county's in place with their engineers, and, and they are the ones that are going to review all of the information and, and determine if it is acceptable and, and approve it. So, you know, our purview is looking at it as, does it meet our criteria, and, and making sure that the proper safeguards are in place that, that are going to review it. So.
And Commission, just to, just to clarify for, for the record, condition of approval K in the resolution in your packet, does, does speak to this, and it provides that a drainage plan, as required by the building department, shall be prepared and approved by city staff prior to issuance of construction permit, and the plan is subject to LA County Code requirements.
Perfect. Thank you for clarification.
So, so if I can ask Charlie Rain, what, when would that occur that would occur to the city review, the city council review? So if planning commission passed, and the city council then doesn't pass, and the county steps in and gives that information?
What's before the commission this evening, the, the site plan, planning review? I think the, the drainage plan would be, it's, it's a condition of approval that would have to be satisfied for construction to, to proceed.
So it's not this step, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the, the commission doesn't weigh in on or approve the drainage.
Because it hasn't been developed yet? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing portion, and the commissioners will start to discuss it. So who would like to start? Somebody's got to start. Greg, you want to start?
Sure. Am I on mute? Sorry. Nope, I got it. Basically, no, I think, good questions today. I think what they're doing is all under the, the, almost the current roof line. I think none of it's visible. We don't have any, from a visibility standpoint or structure standpoint, we don't have any complaints from the neighbors. Any of the drainage will be brought up by others later in this process, like anytime, so I'm okay with the project.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go.
Thank you.
I just wondered, I also think the footprint that's being used, it will not be changed much for the, for the residents or the community to see. I actually think the, enclosing the rear facing out to the ocean from the elevation drawings, it's an attractive finish to that rear. I think it's kind of an improvement. I was wondering if they could, if we could ask them to provide or use permeable paving. I know that one language in the, in the document is paved patio. Is there a way, if we could make that a permeable paved patio? I think, I don't think we can open up past construction, but perhaps we can have that, and there's so many different solutions that could be implemented to alleviate any additional drainage. But again, that's a drainage issue, so I don't know if we can provide that.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Thank you.
I don't have a problem with the project at all. I agree with you, Brad, about the height of the landscaping lining crest. So I would like to state some sort of height restriction on that, because if we don't, I'm afraid it will get out of control, and then we won't have any recourse about it. The garage issue was discussed, so I thought a two-car garage for that big property was a little disproportionate, but I guess that doesn't really matter. So I don't have an issue with that either.
Great, thank you. John?
I'm going to abstain from the vote, because I wasn't able to make the planning commission field trip this morning, so I'll, I'll hold comments.
Okay, okay, sounds great. So, real quick, I've got a couple of questions for the, for the homeowner. I don't, so I'm assuming it's the, the folks who were on site today, is that correct? Okay, so I, I think Jana's comment on doing a paving system or something in the, in that back patio, that would allow water to soak into the ground is a good idea. There's a lot of great materials that you can use. So have, have you guys thought about that? And then my other question is, I really want to make a part of this, that hedge out front. I understand why you need it. I live on Crest, it's a busy street. I understand that, you know, you want the privacy. Get it completely, but there's a happy medium as to not destroying Crest at, you know, or getting your privacy at, at the risk of, of destroying Crest. So, you know, if we put like a height of maybe eight feet for that hedge, does that work for you guys? I'm going to make a motion here in a minute. I just want to make sure, you know, because basically what we can do is we can deny it, or we can make some modifications here right now and, and get it approved. So just want to get your thought on those two items.
Thank you so much for your comments. And first off, the perma paving, yes, we will definitely have that installed in the future addition part during the construction. And also, for the hedge, for eight feet, yes, thank you so much. We will take that as, as a comment that we will not exceed any eight feet for the screening trees. And, but in between the distance, I was wondering, can we go eight feet continuous?
That I don't know. I mean, there's been a lot of dialogue. It's not been party to, to us. So you can work with the city, and you can try to have discussions on that piece of it. I, I, for, for me to, or for us, this committee to comment on that, we would have to have been a party to that, and I don't have all the facts. So Stephanie, it looks like you want to say something.
Oh, no, I'm good.
No. So, so anyways, I, you know, i- if you want to modify that, talk to the city about it. I, I think you're going to find that those bushes are going to grow up, and it's going to fill in in a short period of time.
Well, we really appreciate your thought and consideration as a homeowner along the Crest Road. And we can see when you drive through the Crest Road, almost every home behind the screen, the fence, and that we are the only one kind of very open. And so this is a really, we really appreciate that you understand the homeowner's privacy request. And what we really want to make the fence not only as a privacy protection, but also a beautiful view as part of the Crest Road. When people drive there, then people can really enjoy a nice landscape, landscape. So this is our goal. That, that is why when we feel like you have eight feet apart, like a five, and then you have a 12 feet, eventually, just like John mentioned, the trees go, going to grow there, but you, you can see the, and even distance. So that is why we consider if we can make it even distance, and we keep, we keep it, we maintain, maintain it very well, yeah, so keep it always can be used as a screen rather than a hedge wall. Yeah.
So here's my recommendation to you. Does somebody else want to speak? Okay, so my recommendation is, w- w- we're going to make a resolution for approval subject to a, a, a couple of conditions. That will come back before us next meeting, and we will, you know, do the final approval. So if you can work with the city in the meantime, have that discussion about distance and all of that, and it's in our package for, for next time, we, we can talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So anything else from the commissioners? So I'm going to make a motion here to adopt resolution number 2023-04, approve the project as presented, with a couple of modifications. Want to put in there that the patio depth in the rear would be permeable, and that the hedges up front will be no taller than eight feet. Ryan, is that good, or do I, do I need to do something else?
Uh, well, Chair, that sounds like a great motion, but if, if we, if we adopt it this evening, that will be, that'll be that. It won't come back. The condition will just be added, so.
Okay, forget all that I told you about coming back next meeting.
Okay, because if you want to adopt it and approve it now, we'll just add those in from the record, and we'll be off. But if you want to break it back, you need to continue it.
So let me, let me ask the homeowner. We can approve this now. You can continue to work with the city and see what you can do on the landscaping in the distance, but my recommendation would be to let us approve this, and you can work on that, on the side.
Definitely, yeah.
Thank you.
We really appreciate, yeah, your consideration for.
Yeah, no, no worries. So, Ryan, am I good now with you straightening me out? You're, you're good. Okay, great. So John, you want to do a roll call?
Yeah, if I could, for clarification, I'm looking at the conditions, and Ryan, if you can just help me on this, on page 39 on here. In regards to the permeable pavers, there's condition J, and it talks about a minimum five-foot level path and walkway. I'm thinking maybe we can add something there about the permeable pavers, that condition that was mentioned. And in regards to the height of the landscaping in the front, I'm looking at maybe adding a sentence at the end of condition Q, which is on page 40 of the staff report. And condition Q is in regards to landscaping.
Yeah, we can find, we'll find a good home for that offline, but, but I think, yeah, the Chair's conditions are sufficiently stated, and I, did we have a second?
One second.
I think we're, we're ready for the, the roll call.
Okay, sorry, I'm going to hit myself.
Okay, Commissioner Cardenas?
I abstain.
Commissioner Cooley?
Approved.
Commissioner Douglas?
Approved.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Chair Shell?
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, I see no old business. I see no new business. Field trips, do we have any field trips for next meeting?
Not, we don't have anything scheduled yet.
Nothing scheduled for, for right now.
Okay, well, let us know if you do. We'll make ourselves available. Are there any items from staff?
The only thing we want to report on is, the South Bay Cities Council of Government has been having their South Bay Housing Education Forum. The last one was last week, and I was able to attend that. That was on the California Environmental Quality Act. The next one will be on May 4th, and if the planning commissioners are interested in that one, I can send information on that. It's a virtual meeting held around noon time. And that's all we have to report.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any items from the planning commissioners? Okay, well, thank you, everybody. I am going to adjourn the meeting until Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, at 6:30 via teleconferencing. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Forgot to mention the, that's okay. I was just going to mention that the other one, that, you know, Four Poppy Trail, you know, they weren't ready to come back yet, but that's okay, because they'll come back in a